We'll speak for five minutes and then we'll maximize the time for what everybody wants. Questions and answers back and forth. And work on you only get one question. I'm kidding. That's my days you want.
My name is Dorian Robinson and I'm a resident of Beechwood. I'm a homeowner and I'm a parent to three children that go to Beechwood school. Moved here about seven years solely for the schools, a little bit for the mall, but solely for the state. And initially, everything was going well. One of my high schoolers in 10th grade now, and he's in special education. He has autism. Maybe about his third year, he started becoming stagnated in his learning. I kind of felt that he wasn't progressing, so I hired a behavioral analyst and had to pay out of pocket for that. So that kind of struck me as a little odd red flag where I'm having to pay out of my own pocket for educational services. Couple of years later, about three years later, Rain, my sixth grader, she just completed Hilltop and for some strange reason, the superintendent didn't want to pay for their Destination Imagination coach bus. So they were set to put a bunch of eight-year-olds on a regular school bus to Tennessee. So Rain's godfather had to pay out of pocket $5,000 for a coach bus. And after that, I really became a watchdog because I'm wondering where, what are they doing with our tax dollars? You know, if as parents, we're paying out of pocket, where are the tax dollars? So that's when I became part of the watchdog community to keep the checks and balances and keep them accountable.
Do they have a boss prior or do they run one each year or do they use the yellow school bus prior?
In all the years, they've always had coach buses.
So it was the first time?
It was the first time.
Any questions for me?
Well, I'd just like to clarify that point. They had the school buses which were paid for by the district and the previous, I don't know what the previous superintendent's name was.
Mark what?
What? Yeah, he was very pro-educational and he would provide money for these services. Dr. Hardest came in, he felt because the state had changed some little small rule in the state legislature rules for what they could do. One of the reasons that they had was that they increased the length of travel, that they could take school buses outside of the state. And we were going to Knoxville for that event. And these were eight and nine-year-old kids and they expected them to ride in a school bus from here to Knoxville, no bathroom, no air conditioning, no nothing. The previous superintendent provided, provided aid and got the coaches arranged. He said, oh, the thing that was probably the most disturbing about it is he said, well, I don't know about the kids, but this is what the state now allows us to do. You can take the school bus that far, which is...
Crazy.
It's a, it's a bean counting type of thing in my mind. And so I agreed to pick up the difference, which was a substantial difference because what they wanted to do was compute the amount of money that it would take to take that school bus down there and then the difference, so they would pay that, they paid that part, which was about $2,200. And the rest of the difference, I made it up so that the kids could go to the I. So that got me started.
So those are what our tax dollars are going to?
But there was no question they used to have that money. This was done purely on change in the state legislative law, but he felt he was unable to save that money. My question is, where did that money go? It was there and then it disappeared.
So I'll, I'll say in only five minutes and I will get to Jim. My name's Mikhail Altman. Been in Beechwood 11 years, lived in 148 Richmond, no kids yet in the school, but working at a park.
Right.
Right. I grew up in the old Soviet Union, so this is why issue two failed, right? Because clearly I stole elections. Jokes write themselves. Good job. Well, these are, so we can, we can talk over these talking points. There are various things here. There's one-page one and a two-page one. So who wants to read less, wants to read more, whichever school you went to, right? How much you can read. Is it gonna multi-page booklets? I'll just tell you why you're here. A whole lot of us activists got involved because of the buildings in May and just the sheer size of the levee in, in, in May. Sheer size of the levee, that's why we got involved. A whole ton of us, and I know some of you here, had to quite literally change your religious beliefs and vote against something that's a school for the first time in their lives. We won, right? So that's good. If you want, we can keep talking about that, but the most important point is the issue didn't die. Instead of unifying the city, we're now fighting it in two parts. The May ballot, the May 2020 bond is still coming up. This operating thing is still there. We still didn't get our answers about, okay, why do you need $4.3 million and aren't you trying to cover some of the costs of this demolition construction scheme? After we won, there's been, I'm sorry, some of you, some of these emails, sorry for the volume, but trust me, you haven't seen all of it. I've got a lot more. Some of us are all over the place, right? Some of us want to vote for the operating levy no matter what, right? Some of you that voted no on issue two. Some of us will vote no no matter what, because I know some of you said, they got plenty of money. How much money, how much did this spend for student? I don't hear anything else. Don't even tell me about any of the busing, any of the other issues.
Twenty-seven thousand.
Well, yes, it's in the talking points. I'm assuming that people can still read. But, and then there's some people in the middle, right? Some people are looking for an excuse to vote yes for the levy. And we have not been finding it. And this is part of the reason why you're here, is all these people from various sorts of opposition, okay, well, what do we do? And part of the frustration has been with the, the school board, it hasn't asked the hard questions. I mean, I think in the, in some of the longer terms, you see some of the questions like, okay, what was going on with this? Would you get this $3.5 million talking point? I mean, I don't see it in your own forecast. Where was the cliff at? It was 3.5? Well, it became 2.5 and then it became 2.5, but not in one year. So wait, 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 wait. There are million here, millions there, pretty soon it will have real money. So some of us were looking, well, maybe they'll put a smaller levy, unite the city, forget about it, and I don't have to do this and it'll be great, right? And William will go work out at J C T and don't have to do any of this. No, it doesn't, obviously, we're still at it, we're still fighting issue two. So there is a sign-up sheet if you want to help, if you want to just stay informed, if you want to donate. One of the things I wanted to tell you is, the timing is bad because people are getting hit with some very significant increases from the county and, and this is going to be on top of that. And combine that with very little or flimsy justification, you're looking at very difficult. The one thing that I want to talk about that may or may not be spelled out here is the treasurer of the schools and in some ways, the pro-levee side has been saying that the schools will not get an increase as a result of their revaluations next year. Technically, that's not true. They're not going to get the full increase that we will have to pay, but there are 6.8 million inside and so on and so forth and argue whether or not, how much of new construction will get into the schools. But new construction, it's new money. So the talking point of the school being on a fixed income is incorrect. And I mean, I can show you this thing here. This is the five-year forecast, right? It's a legal document that's filed with the state. I mean, this is a, this is problem number one and line number one. General property, real estate taxes. Why is this flat? What, we don't have any construction or anything? What is this? I mean, there's all these other questions, you start digging in there. What, we're flat? I mean, what, you don't get a single dollar from, from tax things. So you start digging in there and go from there and you go like, oh, wait a minute, who's asking these hard questions? Where's the board? So this is where it's coming from and hopefully we get to some of these and question ask first. I think I'm done with my five minutes here. Just a few words.
My name is Jim Heller. Graduated from Beechwood in 1964. After going to Ohio State, getting married and having my first child, moved back to Beechwood in 1974. Been here ever since. I and my wife both graduated from Beechwood with approximately the same population of students in the system back then, that is there today. Interesting point, how we keep building and building and building. And who are we building for except they have new structures? Why do we tear down middle schools when they're 20 years old? I fought for the levy in 1993 and helped produce a document that went out to all the residents, which we sold without much cause, issues or anything, because we provided all legitimate, good information that people wanted to support. I've worked my entire career as an architect. I'm basically semi-retired, acting as a consultant. I've done 50 projects in Beechwood, working with developers, making and helping Beechwood become what it is today. Spent 30 years of my life as a volunteer fireman, supporting my residents and ended up unfortunately where we lost nine of them, including a baby that I had to carry out a fire. So my heart, my soul, and everything that I can do to make and make and continue to make Beechwood better is what I want to see. It's been a devoted effort on my side to come forward and have to even address the fact that we're not having the type of communication that we should be having between the school board and the residents. For whatever reason, it has not been there. It has not been one of trust, which I don't understand why that's the case. I can tell you, it was a short time before the resignation of Michael Zawinski, who happens to be my immediate neighbor. I spent almost two hours with him about a week and a half before he made his announcement. We had lots of things to discuss. He didn't disagree with much of what I said, by the way. At that time, he did tell me that the plan was to go forward with just a levy initially and that the quote consolidation of whatever that might be or might become or might look like would not be addressed and come before the residents of Beechwood until May of 2020. I also brought up the fact that as long as I have known, not that I attended as many school board meetings as I did city council meetings and planning commissions for over 40 years, that there's no discussion of subjects that go on at the school board meeting. The agenda comes out the day before or the, or maybe two days earlier and people can see it on, on email, but the board members speak to one another by themselves or with email and they come to a meeting. On the, on the agenda board, you see maybe half-inch letters that you can't read of a resolution that gets voted on, but there's no discussion. There's no talk between the members. So then why would any residents even want to come to that meeting? And that, and of course, they offered someone three minutes to speak at the end, but it has no bearing on what goes on because things again are not discussed. There has been a lack of trust with the school board, which I would hope would be better. I mentioned that specifically to Michael. Michael indicated to me that he would consider it. I can tell you, three days later, he grabbed me. I was coming back from playing softball, Beechwood men's softball, which I've been a commissioner for the last 35 years and have played since 1971 in our league, which was, has expanded greatly. And Michael said to me, you know, I have to apologize for the way I acted with you. I said, well, you know, I understand I was hitting you with the first time with these comments and it's the first time that you and I had spoken about this matter, although we talked many other things over the last months and weeks and days and years, obviously since he came to me, since they moved into their home. And he said, you're right, we have to be more open with our residents. We should have discussions at our meetings and not just read and vote on resolutions. And without using names at this point beyond Michael, because it's the only one that I would say use, he told me he had a major conversation and in fact, he had three conversations about the fact that this was going to change. Now, for whatever reason, whatever reasons, rational or whatever, that he left and decided to resign, I felt bad because I already thought I had a rapport going relating to this topic. I can also say, although not a topic for tonight, of much discussion needed because we are here discussing the school levy, we're not here discussing the consolidation plan. I have a list of concerns about this consolidation plan, which is an atrocious design plan. And I have many others that are on that side, that are with and officials of the city of Beechwood. I can't believe it came to what came to, and I pointed out some of those things to Michael, which he was not aware of was on the plan. I don't feel that it's our school board, and I've heard this from others, that are really speaking to us. I think that the pressures, I think that the environment that's been created has come over the last three years. And I think the superintendent is playing a role that he should not be playing to the degree that he's playing it and that our residents need to understand, even though he's a resident, that it's the school board and their interface that we want to have as an open transparency. So I can only tell you that I am going to do everything I can and be part of anything I can to make it what Beechwood deserves. We have two neighborhoods' school buildings. They were not all 60 years old because there were additions built onto both of them. They were also built with masonry construction, which is what a school building should be built of, not what Fairmount is built of, which is wood frame with brick veneer, whether any of you know that or not. That is the case. Okay? This plan, if it had a fire situation, could currently, can be, can be fought from two sides. In that consolidation plan, it can only be fought from one side, assuming that firemen are want to go down a dead-end pathway, if you wish, between the new building and the existing Fairmount school. The whole manner of, the manner in which this plan was conceived, was presented or not presented, if you wish, didn't involve many residents, didn't involve people that maybe knew a little bit about Beechwood. I'm proud of everything I did in Beechwood. It's still standing today. It's still paying taxes today. And I'll tell you the truth, I cannot be, I could not be or will do anything I possibly can, if it comes to this, to fight the construction of a new building as now conceived and tear down two neighborhood schools. I grew up in Beechwood. When I came here, I went into the high school in 10th grade. My wife came here in 1954. She went through many more graves than I did. But one of the things that was wonderful, and I lived for several years on Brighton Road, was having neighborhood schools. That's special. That's special to our community. That's what has made our community. That's what permits children, in some cases, to walk to school. That will be greatly affected should them be demolished. And then what's, what's to say what might come down the road in Beechwood? That maybe if the consolidation plan go forward, both schools get torn down except the gym at Hilltop, now you have a piece of land that they talk about putting in house lots, which are going to average homes that would bring maybe 20 to 25, maybe, at land prices at 20, 250 to 350 a lot, at homes that would be 600 to 650,000, excuse me, I'm getting over a cold. Not many kids are going to be in those schools. And then there's really no plan, there's no approval, there's no agreement with the city, although the city's been asked to do the work at Hilltop School relating to recreation and other activities. But the fact of the matter is, why tear down two buildings? I'm not saying they don't need to be renovated. Why was there not a plan eight years and 10 years ago to renovate and keep these buildings in good shape? Why can't we have a place, a city, and a combined group of people that come out and celebrate the fact that, look at what we've done to this building and the fact that our kids still go there? I watched the one in Solom. That building celebrated 50 years. They had a huge celebration. They had a new roof. They had air conditioning. They had new windows in the buildings. And the kids had a whole bundle of fun with the PTA and everybody else that came and supported it to celebrate that building. Okay? But that building was maintained. It was at 10 years, at 20 years, at 30 years, there were things that were done to those buildings. I like to see the list of what's been done to our buildings, which if there's a list at all, which I doubt there is, but there's been minimal dollars spent on our buildings. I was totally, totally in such opposition of tearing down the middle school rather than renovating it, adding on it and so forth, of a building that's 20 years old. That's disgusting. It's really disgusting for a public-type building for that to happen. So with that, I think I've said enough. That's my viewpoint. Throw out some things on the table for thoughts and comments. We're here for questions. With lack of better, I'll, yes, sir.
I thought I was coming to the meeting to discuss a levy. I heard the last gentleman rant about the bond issue and tearing down buildings. If you're going to talk about buildings, which is not on the, on the ballot, let me know and I'll leave the meeting out.
Yeah, so we have that on one of the talking points, that this repair part. So if, if the operating dollars are being asked for, you have to look and see where the spending is now. And that started the conversation about, is there money to do anything, any even minuscule improvements to the existing buildings? And the answer resounding is no. On top of that, the plan or the issue two, as it's been defeated by voters, has not been abandoned. So if the plan has not been abandoned and now we're being asked for a very significant increase in property taxes to, to support operations, but these operations don't include anything at all to the buildings, then the obvious talking point is, are we still fighting issue two? Are we still on these buildings? That's, that's why we have Tom Hall. So some people, you're right, some people say, okay, well, if it's, if it says operating levy, I'm going to vote for it, even though the truth is, the operating dollars could be used for, for the building stuff. It can't be the other way around. You can't use the building dollars to, to pay the salaries and benefits, but, but you can use operating dollars to do whatever buildings and construction things. Don't you have any questions?
No, I just, I've heard a lot of, I'm, I'm by no means an expert on education or building, but I got a kid in first grade, so now I've been in the buildings a decent amount. And all I know is they look like a school, what I think it's supposed to look like. I'm not an expert on schools, but I keep hearing that things are substandard and yeah, they're 60 years old and they don't look perfect, you know? But I went to Mercer, which I think is 60 years old too, and Shaker. And I guess I'm, I'm a little bit wondering why there's some attitude that the schools have been neglected. Maybe they have, I just haven't noticed it and I haven't gone into the walls, I haven't gone into anything. And I'm not an expert like Mr. Heller is on architecture, but what is, what are, what has been neglected of these buildings?
So there is a long list. I don't want to get too much into it. We do have a very long list on some of the other talking points. We have some people, is Jim here? The other Jim. No, no, but, but anyway, it's, it's an offline discussion, we can really talk over, I, I know more about it than I ever cared to know. But there, there's some bigger items like boiler and air conditioning and whatever else. Yeah, they, they can be done, but they're not like $39 million. We're talking about less than one, less than two.
No, this, this is more towards the operating levy, how there's no money, because I care about the operating levy because that's for the ballot.
Right, so, so that's the, the whole discussion. You know, if you have $20 million in the bank, you're asking for 4.3 per year, plus you'll get extra with the revaluation. You'll get extra with the new construction, which is ongoing from Astor Apartments to the bank on Park East, whatever, you'll keep going in Beechwood, right? Not, there's not, there's no new constructions, there's no stopping of tear downs and, and rehabs, because that's new money that's coming in. So, so there's new money coming in. So with all this money that's already in the bank, all this money that we're already spending, can we just please spare something to the two buildings? And the resounding answer right now is no.
I'm not asking, I'm just wondering what needs to be spent on the buildings? They look like what I imagine they're supposed to look like.
There's some stuff, so, so, so the question then becomes is, well, I'm, I'm looking for reasons to vote yes on the levy, but if you're not even going to spend one penny for like smaller fixes and updates, then why can't we, why don't we go and vote yes? Especially considering the increases in the property taxes.
The whole reason they want to tear down the buildings is because they need so much work done.
No, that's never the reason I voted for it though.
Why haven't we been repairing them along the way? They're construction building, constructional buildings. I mean, they're brick and mortar. Why would, why are they in such bad, that's the whole thing with this building fund to, to have a bond levy to, to build a new school around Fairmount. If these schools are in such bad shape, why, then why can't we fix them?
Obviously, one of the big points is that the school said the reason they needed all this money was the 3.5 million. And can you address the fact that there, that we don't have that gap of the 3.5 million dollars?
Sure. So this is a Beechwood buzz and this, this, this talking point, so we have, that's pretty much on the first talking point on any version. 3.5 million, 3.5 million lost, state actions, bad Columbus, bouncing budget on the backs of Beechwood. It's just not true. I mean, so, so we've spent, so we spent quite a bit of time going back to, to, to school board meetings and addressing it there too, asking, okay, well, where's your evidence? So one of the things we said, okay, well, if that's true, that's another thing, like there's a whole bunch of us that are saying, look, if that's the cliff, maybe, maybe you should have asked earlier and we would have given you money. So there's a whole bunch of us that want to give more money. If, if that's indeed such a gap, let's plug it in. The problem is if you look percentage-wise, okay, well, that would be then the cut for all the other districts too then, right? Much bigger districts, so their cut is, would be ginormous per year, just some cliff like that, and, and that's just not true. None of them are there. So, so the only explanation, we have, same thing with Beechwood, Cleveland Jewish News, I mean, it's the same 3.5 million dollar talking point that appears all over the place. So, okay, so where is the cut? Like where's, what's these, what are these state actions that took away Beechwood school money? The only one we got was TPP, tangible personal property tax. So that thing has been phased out years ago, quite literally. You look on the documents, there hasn't been, there hasn't been tangible property tax. And here, the five, the five-year forecast from, from the schools, right? So it's this, you are out here, you know, from Ohio Department of Education, you get five-year districts and then the forecast for Beechwood comes out. See this? One time, we got like the last night. One time, we got like the last ninety-two thousand. There hasn't, there hasn't really been anything coming in. So where's the three-and-a-half million dollar cliff here? So clearly, it's just not there.
It's not gonna happen annually, it's not gonna keep happening. Over a period of time, they lost money, but it is no longer being taken away.
I mean, if we're worried about a one-time ninety-two thousand dollar thing, why are we trying to raise four-point-three million dollars a year on top of our tax increase already? So that's really the key. The one more thing I will tell you is, you know, so, I mean, there's been changes. This is why it's difficult to address this changing talking point. Well, it's three-and-a-half, no, it's two-and-a-half million dollars, it's per year. Ah, it's kinda all over the place. Well, okay, which one?
Mikhail, I'm on your side on this, but my understanding was this was that House Bill sixty-four, an omnibus budget bill with many, many features. The original bill said that the school, state funding to schools would remain the same for every district across, as it had been. But then the governor went through with the line item veto and eliminated that provision. And he's saying that, and the governor was quoted to say, that we're gonna put more responsibility for the wealthy districts to raise their taxes to make up for the funds that we're not giving them. Now, I don't know where the three, how the three-point-five comes into it, but that's the facts about that House Bill sixty-four that they're talking about. I'd like to see how they get from my understanding to the actual numbers. I don't understand that. But that's the source. So there is, there is some truth to the change.
So wait, but the point of that was, that didn't happen yesterday. That happened quite a while ago. And the school system has still been able to operate without those funds. When Kasich bragged about balancing the budget, he balanced the budget because they stopped giving money back to the schools that they always did. And somehow we've been fine for several years without it. All of a sudden, you go to a school board meeting, it sounds like the state took it away yesterday. And that's just not...
That's been the frustration too. So if that was the case, right, okay, fine, well, tell us, you know? That's the whole thing with some of the activists, that the frustration has been like, well, some people, listen, if that's the case, why don't you give it to us straight? Why is it like three-and-a-half, then it's two-and-a-half, then it's Peterson scholarships? Well, Peterson scholarships are three-something thousand, but then somehow we'll show it as a mill, go up to Stratosphere. It's all over the place. Yes, sir.
You said before something, you said that's not true.
Yes, sir.
That's something left in there. Why should I believe you that's not true? I'm on your side, we're educating. You said it's not true, you must say when you accept.
Well, I'll tell you, so hopefully you can see this, right?
Well, I cannot.
Make it larger.
Make it larger.
Oh, never mind. Sir, well, anyway, so I guess if I can't show you, I'll have to speak to you. So there's a five-year forecast, that the school district has to, has to submit to the state. In that five-year forecast, there is no three-and-a-half million dollar cliff coming from the state of Ohio next year, which is not, which is not there. The cliff, there's no cut, there's no cut in three-and-a-half million dollar cut next year.
You're basically using someone that had a long time.
Yes, sir.
I just wanna introduce myself, I'm Brian Weiss, and if you're interested in working with me, and here to offer any information that I can, be happy to say in a year, an hour, or above later. I'm not gonna argue at every point, you know? I said last time, I say it again this time, I respect everybody's opinion, everybody's entitled to their opinion, entitled to their vote. All I ask for is correct information. And without going through each one of these, I can tell you that each one of these bullet points is misinformation. And the one that I do wanna address, because it seems to be such a big talk from you, is the three-point-five million dollars. We are in fact losing two-point-five million dollars for the tangible personal property tax over the next two years, the majority of which is leaving this coming year, small, small portion. For the past number of years, the state has held us harmless in the tangible personal tax. Next year, with line veto, as you stated, as the gentleman stated, we are losing two-point-five million dollars. The other million, which is debatable, I mean, it could be eight-hundred thousand, it could be a million too, we don't know, is the Peterson scholarship. And let me explain those, the Peterson scholarship and the autism scholarship. Those are scholarships that anybody with a child with autism disability that goes to a non-public school, private school in Beechwood, is entitled to that money for services to their child. We're not reimbursed for that money, we have to do that, and we have no problem doing that. We do it for our kids and our kids with disabilities in our own, in our schools, we do it. But for whatever reason, over the last several years, that just exploded. And it's going to be a million dollars this year, it could be more, it could continue to come up the next three years. That's where the three-point-five million comes from. The number is real, the number is real, you know, so I'm not, you know, I just don't want to doubt that we're making something up. The number's real. Just a couple things while I have a thought.
Why do they say annually, though? Everything you create per year, you hear three-point-five annually, you're gonna be losing.
Because the three-point-five is gone forever, so every year we're down, we're down three-point-five million.
Well, that's misleading in the same way that it could be either way, as saying that annually we're...
No, because if we didn't say annually, it would insinuate that we're losing it one time, and next year we'll get it back. That three-point-five is gone forever. Every year we're down three-point-five million dollars in the money that...
No, what she's saying is, you're not even losing it this year.
No, 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 no.
But it sounds familiar.
But they're saying annually, I do say it could determine that way, no, that means...
But what percent, Brian, of our budget at Beechwood is that three-point-five million?
It's about ten percent of our budget. We have about thirty-five million dollar budget.
Is it thirty-five, or you said it was a forty-two million dollar budget?
Well, so...
Yeah, forty-two million dollars.
So it's less than ten percent. Let me ask you this, the children that have these scholarships would have to be either, you would pay it, or they'd be in your school for twenty-seven thousand dollars a year. So what's the difference?
We would get reimbursed for them being in the school, if they were in our schools. We don't get reimbursed for them in a public, you know, private school.
We reimburse it for them, don't you pay for all of your children to be in private schools?
We don't, the state pays for wherever they're at. They don't pay us for the child that's in private schools, so they don't pay us. But we are responsible for busing, for services, it's not just autism scholarship. If a child with a disability needs some type of services, whether it's therapy or whatever, the schools pay for it. It comes out of our budget, we don't get reimbursed for it.
But the kids that I want to send in your public schools?
Yeah, absolutely, they get, we pay for them too. This is just an additional...
So it's either here or there, you know? You said, but actually, we have a very high percentage of children that go to private school here in the city. So that's actually, we all register, all the kids that go, kids in the Shivas registered tomorrow in Beechwood. You would have a real big problem.
No, we would, we'd get reimbursed by the state government.
How much do they get reimbursed?
I honestly, I'd be lying if I do.
You don't get reimbursed a hundred percent, you don't get twenty-seven thousand dollars for it, it goes to kids.
You know, I can't say it, but I don't, I don't know. And just to take...
Very low, very low number.
Very grateful, Brian, sir, because the lady behind you, we just had her head right now.
Go ahead, sorry, go ahead, no, go ahead. I was gonna say, the forty-two, they're gonna use the number forty-two million for our budget. That includes a lot of money, which is what we call pass-through money. We, as a school system, we operate, we act as fiscal agents for a number of different schools, for the religious schools. Say Mandel or something. If they have an expense, certain expense, the money comes through our schools, and we're just a pastor for, we're a pastor. We, if we get a billion dollars, we write the bill for them, pay the bill for a billion dollars out of ours, it's just the way it works. But that shows up in our budget as a thing, but it's not our money. Our actual budget in Beechwood, for Beechwood's schools, for Beechwood's students is thirty-five million dollars a year, about thirty-five million dollars. And what we actually, is our budget for the schools. So the forty-something, if you look at the numbers, it'll show forty-something, but the difference is pass-through money, that is not our money. It's money that's used for private schools.
I have two questions. It says here that the forecast shows no shortage of money, is that a five-year forecast that the state makes them do?
No, so the forecast is actually, well, there's a lot of questions about forecasts, but for example...
I mean, are they balanced in their budget without having a levy?
No, well, I'll show you the forecast, the forecast, hopefully you can see the...
The numbers are very small.
Go over it right now.
Go over it right.
Go over it right.
There's a slide in the corner.
There you go.
So the forecast, you know, part of the problem is, look at the line item of the property tax, it just stays stagnant at twenty-five.
Do you have, gentlemen, if you want, if you have a picture of...
Announcing, so the first, the first line item is the general tax revenue. And the problem with the forecast as it's submitted, is there's a stagnant twenty-five million dollar stock. Well, decreases from next year and it just stays twenty-five million, which, you know? You know anything about Beechwood and construction, and Beechwood, terror towns, whatever else? That's new money, there's gotta be some new money. So then you go down from there, okay, what are some of the other things we're looking at? So one of the problems here is, last year, six-and-a-half million dollars for pensions, right? Line item twenty-three. That number goes up rapidly to eight-and-a-half million dollars, which is a giant jump. Like, this is two million dollars in a matter of five years. So what happened in the, that is such a giant jump in pension? Okay, well, if it's a real expense, then we got a problem. But then at the same time, it goes back to what Jim was saying, well, where was the board? Who negotiated contracts like this? That we go up in two million dollars in pension just in two, five short years? So anyway, that's the problem. You have a second question?
Yeah, okay, this is for Mr. White, I guess. We've had, since the last few years, we had superintendent, assistant superintendent let go, or his position was eliminated. Then we had the assistant superintendent position put back. Then it was eliminated again, and now we're putting it back. Meanwhile, we're cutting a principal and taking the two schools that they wanted to demolish and making one principal. How can we trust, but what is going on? No one's explaining any of this.
So the answer to the question is, first of all, the changing round is just, was a front office reorganization by the one principal that left, the one...
But they said superintendent that they just put was a tech guy, he's not, he doesn't really have that kind of experience.
He does have that, he does have that. He's a, he's a, he's got his PhD in administrator, he does have that type of experience. So that's a side point, but we lost a, we lost a principal. We put in an assistant principal, and with the whole reorganization and cost-cutting, try and do that...
Why did we lose a principal?
She left. She said she wanted, she was looking at other opportunities.
So now we have one...
We have one principal and an assistant principal.
And three, for three schools?
Correct.
Yeah.
Right, it was two.
But they're not planning to put another principal there, that's the whole point there.
Well, but we have an assistant, so we still have two administrators there. And we had administrators in the wrong building. And that, so without going into that, that is what it is. But, and so as far as the whole reorganization plan, by doing that, some of the other individuals in the main office took on more responsibilities because of our failure in May. And with this whole change, we're saving over a hundred thousand dollars a year. So bottom line is, we're giving the same service, we're doing the same thing, we got the same number of people doing jobs, but we're saving a hundred thousand dollars, over a hundred thousand a year.
Sorry, so Sheila was next, she had her hand in the, near the back, and then Jim.
So when my children went to this school, we were number one or two in the state.
What else is there?
Okay, she's one or two in the state. Now I see, we're way down there, what number are we at?
Fifteen.
Okay, no, we're working more than...
Well, high school is worse, the high school, high school is pretty bad.
Oh, and we just put a beautiful, we spent a fortune on that, I swear.
Well, it's not bad, it's very good, but it's not what...
It's not what you...
Beechwood, it's not what Beechwood expects, it's not what people think they are.
That's right, okay, that's one of the reasons why people move here, is for the schools. And yet, we're spending twenty-seven thousand dollars a year per student, when what is the average in the state, fourteen?
Eleven.
We're averaging money, where are the numbers, and who's responsible? Who's responsible to this?
Our actual numbers are sixteen thousand nine hundred dollars a student, they're not twenty-seven thousand. And number one, number two, we are, if you look at the rankings, just came out last week, there's four schools in Howard County that got A ratings, Beechwood's one of them.
No, that's true.
We're still, we're still, we are still one of the premier districts.
We're not where we used to be, and we're spending much more money.
We are not, we are...
So who's responsible for it?
For what, for what's the question?
From what I just said, for our ratings, for the cost, for everything, isn't the superintendent responsible for all of this? Okay, so, wouldn't this be more of a goal for us than tearing down buildings, spending forty million dollars? Well, yeah, I mean...
Have you renounced that plan though, Brian?
No.
And there's every attempt to go forward, excuse me, with that plan from everything that we know. And so one of the issues is, is this five-point-nine millage justified in anticipation of the consolidation plan? Or are you guys gonna take the position that you're gonna reevaluate? Because more than half the community was against it. But what we hear is, is you're going forward one thousand percent with the consolidation. And if that's the case, and we have some reviews...
Hardest, Dr. Hardest said, we will meet a bond issue in the future. I got that right out of Cleveland Jewish News.
We will, we will meet a bond issue in the future, but we don't, we're not committed, and to answer your question, yes. I mean, that's the reason we're here today, with just an operating levy. We are taking a step back, we listened to the beginning, we're taking a step back, and we will reevaluate the entire, the entire thing before we come back with anything. At some point, as all of you said, whether you're for or against it, we have to do something with the buildings, whatever. It's some answer, we gotta do something with the building. What we're gonna do, we are not committed to doing A, B, or C, or committed to going back, looking at A, B, and C, talking with all of you and everybody that has other opinions.
But you haven't renounced the plan as it was. And in fact, you took the same, excuse me, you took the same five-point-nine mills. You didn't reevaluate it in terms of the reappraisal, because even with nine-twenty, you're gonna get more money on the current millage. You're certainly gonna get more money with respect to the millage in the future, that's, because nine-twenty is gonna apply, it's a new millage. It's gonna be based on the new valuation. And the residents and homeowners of this community are gonna get in hard. And the issue is, is five-point-nine mills appropriate? I haven't heard that there was any school board meeting where it was discussed before you guys put it right back on the ballot to get that way. There was no meeting where there was discussion as to whether you really need five-point-nine mills, especially if you don't go forward with the consolidation plan.
Truthfully, we probably wouldn't afford the five-point-nine mills. But the five-point-nine mills, in the last plan, assumed consolidation, a saving, a yearly savings of five-hundred thousand dollars on operating. We're not gonna have that savings. So the five-point-nine won't last as long as the five-point-nine would with consolidation.
There's been no public discussion about the appropriateness of the millage.
So I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I gotta take time out, because I gotta go on for a moment. The lady in the back, you were next, sorry.
I was just gonna say, as a parent, and being pretty lame with the numbers, just hearsay, hearing about Hilltop and hearing how wonderful the principal was, and hearing from different people, for whatever it's worth, that she was forced out, it hurts me so much to think, we're in this small community, we bought into this community for certain reasons, to have unity, we thought, to have honesty in a smaller community between school board, between parents, and to hear this, to hear we don't have money, but there really is so much money. I just, we work so hard to be able to put our kids in a school district where we think they're gonna be taken care of for intervention to... And I feel like it's a few people that are making decisions, that they want these beautiful buildings and things that are, you know, it's like a small agenda for a few people, and it's not, it's not representing even the community. And it seems really unfair. It's again, what you hear, people on top, the people below, and there's not honesty. Even things are being decided, and then all of a sudden, you know, laymans are coming into the meeting thinking we have a vote, or we have any, you know, any, we have any, we're able to offer any of our perspective, it doesn't mean anything. I mean, here we go again with, you know, it's like the big politics. It makes me wanna, you know, move to a different community and hopefully something will be there.
So I'll just say very quickly, and then Howard is next, he hasn't spoken yet. Brian Weiss, you're right, and you're wrong, so this is why we got to town hall. You're right that the operating, operating dollars, as they are, you're closer to sixteen, seventeen thousand dollars per student. However, to undecided voter, if you're gonna do all these constructions, all these bonds, and all these other things, the undecided voter is like, well, this must be to improve the education, right? So to the undecided voter, benefits for a janitor versus interest on a bond, it's all in education. So to compare apples to apples, we gave you in 2010, a bond levy to redo whatever the school, whatever auditorium pool, which is not still redone, we gave you that money, that should all still be counted as per student cost. But in the same time, you are right, that if you only take the operating dollars, right? If you don't look at this other expense, then that's closer to sixteen.
That's how the state, that's how the state of Hilltop, mandates.
And that's how your eleven thousand number, you say the average is eleven thousand. It's against sixteen then. I mean, don't say it's twenty-seven, the average is eleven thousand.
So, so, so we have links here, I mean, I've got, I've got longer versions of these, by the way, so many documents, but...
If you, if you look at the state numbers, even with the difference, not twenty-seven, but it's sixteen, Beechwood is still first second, and the first second... but it's sixteen, Beechwood is still first, second, and the first, second, and third, up in the corner, away from all the other schools.
We're spending more now on buildings than we used to in 2010, I checked that out.
Even without the buildings.
Right, and I have longer versions of the files, Mike, where there's a federal page.
No, I'm just saying.
And then, right, but there's also a state link too, where the state, the state is showing the full now.
I'm just saying, don't say the average is eleven and we're at twenty-seven, when if you're apples to apples, it's just under seventeen and eleven. I mean, that's a big difference.
No, because everybody else's average is one.
The eleven and us under sixteen, those are apples to apples, and you're right, whatever the twenty-seven, whatever the average is, is higher than eleven, I don't know what it is, but it's not twenty-seven to eleven, it's eleven to sixteen.
The state report shows it at twenty-one, week sixty-nine.
Thirty-five million divided by fifteen hundred is twenty-three thousand, twenty-two cents, twenty-three.
I'm looking at what's filed by the board.
Howard was next, sorry.
In November, we have a ballot issue for five point nine million dollars, or five point nine millage. Has there ever been an accounting of what makes five point nine up?
No.
This is the frustration.
Okay, no, that's the point, and I see, I hear a lot of what's going on, and I agree with a lot, I agree with, disagree with some. There's an election in November. The fact that the levies were voted down in May was a surprise to a lot of people who were sitting pat and content with the way things went on in Beechwood. If you, in two months, or whatever the period of time is, you're going to have people coming out to vote for the levy for no other reason than they were surprised that the levy didn't pass first time through. So we can debate twenty-seven thousand per student, we can debate twenty, seventeen thousand, we can debate all this sort of stuff, whatever the thing is, I'm more pragmatic about it, is you don't want to see this levy, and there's no way to change it at this point, I assume it's been put in. That's what you're going to have to deal against, and all this other stuff becomes noise, and people's eyes roll back in their heads. You're not going to come up with answers that are going to satisfy everybody. If you are against the levy, if you're against the levy because of accountability, or because it's too much, or for a variety of other reasons, or there's operating money, fine, how are you going to work to defeat this levy?
Well.
That, that, cutting through all the noise, that's really the only thing that matters at this point.
So, so, right, so this is a Q and A, right, so open to the public, obviously put on by the anti-issue two people, but at the same time, some of the anti-issue two people are fixing to vote straight up operating levy, no matter what the specifics are.
Right.
Now, having said that, you, one more plug, you can sign up for some of the email lists and the, on all these email lists, and so these talking points, how did we come up with these, both two page, one page, or three page? By the way, I got more pages. How did it all come up? How did it all come up, right? So some of you know, because some of you have been on the back and forth, we've had like just regular friends to get, get together meetings, and that's how it came up. So Howard, to answer your question, how are you going to fight it? Well, first of all, you got to find out where people are.
No, no, and I accept that, I guess I'm just kind of trying to cut to the chase here, we're never going to satisfy everybody's concerns with the dollars up and down and everything else, it's just the reality of the situation. You have to come up with a plan that is acceptable to those that lean towards voting for the levy. You can't do it with vitriol, you can't do it with debating whether it's three, three and a half million or out of the budget, or it's in the budget. You really got to get down to brass tacks, there's not a lot of time.
And maybe we don't fight it at all, so that's another one.
That is a possibility.
Yeah, so William has his, yeah, that's.
Hi, my name is Bill Marling, thirty-year resident of Beechwood, two kids through the schools, one a National Merit Scholar, who is now an Admiral in the Navy. She is. I'm an English professor at Case Western Reserve, so I'd like to do the final commas and. I have my kids in schools from Kobe, Japan, to Vienna, Austria, and I have to say that going through Hilltop and Brighton, those are great schools, a little maintenance is needed, this is good infrastructure. I live in a ninety-year-old house, maintenance is the name of the game. For the talking points, we need to have unassailable numbers. This is great, the examples are great, but we can't make a mistake on the twenty-seven and the seventeen. So we need to be, when we go around door to door, we need to have unassailable and quick and simple arguments that we can make when we talk to our neighbors.
Yeah, so one, one, one point, and just a lot of these things, including example, we went through legal people, accounting people, law director people, some people here, so it's gone back and forth. I think you were on some of them. The twenty-seven thousand dollar figure came up in the spring, where a lot of us were just, wow, we're new to this, we're just outraged, and, okay, just keep it simple to us, how much money did you spend last year? How many students did you have? Okay, per student, twenty-seven thousand, that's, that's really, why don't you start getting into operating, obviously people in this room, that's different, why don't you get into this operating? Okay, Susan, I think was next, right? I'm trying, you see, I'm going in order, but also people who haven't spoken yet, sorry. Yes.
Thank you. My, my concern, and this is even bigger than just what we're voting on in November with this, we were always told, oh, Beechwood taxes are so low, we can raise them. Well, I have news for you, you see the mall, what's happening to the mall, what's happening to a lot of the businesses, they're in Beechwood because taxes are low. Number one, you raise this, and you raise their property taxes, they are going to go moving out.
The library will be closing in thirty minutes. If you need a library card, please come up to the circulation desk.
People, Beechwood.
Self-checkout and the cash register will shut down.
Beechwood is not only going to lose money from the schools, we're going to lose money for salaries, for everything, if we raise our taxes. I have talked to people, look at what's going on with the Hamptons and the other places that rent, they have to raise their rent. Do you think people are going to move there? I don't. I think Beechwood is going to have a lot of commercial and rentals where they can't do anything with. And that is my overall fear, and looking at what's going on around the country, in other places, and you look at Richmond Mall, you look at other things, okay, it's not because taxes were raised, but I'm telling you, if we raise our taxes, we're not going to have a vital community. And that's what really scares me.
Who hasn't spoken already? Who hasn't spoken that wants to speak? Yes.
I would like to just put in my two cents of a business point of view, and actually from probably a personal point of view, everybody here, but they have to keep in mind what we have to look at as the sole driving factor in a yes or no vote, is is the increase in costs, the increase in taxes, going to be justified by the increase in benefits of the school. And I think that's where I come down, the increase in costs are not going to result in increases in benefits of the school. And if we couch that in terms of that logic, that's how everybody has to make the decision, and the bottom line is that's what they're going to do, they're going to decide with their pocketbook. If the increase in tax justified is justified by an increase in benefits, people will probably go yes. But if we can show that it has no benefit, it's just an increase without benefits, people will not go.
Okay, well, thank you. All right, anybody else who hasn't spoken that wants to speak? Yes?
I'd just like to say, and this is sudden, I noticed from the chart, I think it's important to find out if those numbers were accurate, and if we are actually spending like twenty percent of the budget now on retirement, and if it's going up to twenty-five in five years, that, that's, well, why is not sustainable? If that's, if that's the truth. I'm just saying, that's something that, one, here's, here's the bottom line, if we get more communication from the board, I think it would be very helpful, any attempt that I have made, I, you know, I haven't talked to anyone, but, but maybe I talked to the bad guys, you know, but anyway, if, if we could get, you know, the small-town feel again, and get some cooperation and some dialogue, I think that would go a long way.
My answer is, I'm committed to that, I won't put that, any one of you talking about something that I talked to about along the way, you know, I, I'll give you, I'll give you the truth, I'll give you the numbers, if I can't get them for you, I'll get them from somebody else. As far as retirement, we have no control over that, the retirement.
Well, that's in the contract.
Is, is, it's in the contract, so.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
State, state, that's the R S B E R, whatever, so we can't, we can't say, no, we're not going to do that.
I need to help, there should be question, why that number is so big?
What, the retirement?
That's, that's.
We have no control over that, we have no control over it. It depends exactly, depending how many people retired, their benefits are there, we have to pay them.
Benefits change all the time at businesses.
We can't, we have no, we can't change, I mean, state.
And this is redo your pension and profit sharing all the time.
No, on that point, he's correct.
It's a public pension system, it's the, the school, the employer, whether it's a municipality or the school board or the school district, is not going to have any discretion to adjust that. It's all set by state law and by the S T R S board, and S, I forget what the other one is.
But it's, yeah, it's, it's, it's pretty steep, yeah.
It's a pretty steep.
Well, they're probably looking at your staff and projecting how many people are about to hit retirement age.
So I think, I think the solution is to not have any employees, only contractors, just so you don't pay the hospital. See, that's the whole system. Okay, point, point of information.
I came here to get information. Now, I remember an old statement that was quoted, figures don't lie, Myers figured. I hear twenty-seven thousand, I hear seventeen, under seventeen thousand versus eleven thousand. I came here for information, and let me tell you, if you want my vote, we haven't given you any information. Is it twenty-seven thousand or is it seventeen thousand? The school board, that tells me it's under seventeen thousand, you keep saying twenty-seven thousand, which is it?
Twenty-seven thousand, because.
Wait, 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 is it twenty-seven thousand?
Twenty-seven thousand, because last year you spent over forty-two million dollars. How many kids did you have? Fifteen hundred fifty students, straight off of your school report, annual, right there and then, okay? So divided, straight division, how much money did you spend, how many students did you have? We're going to take all your information at face value, that you have fifteen hundred fifty students, you spent forty-two million dollars last year. The undecided voter, that's how they see it, but they don't, they don't, they don't look at it like, wait a minute, wait a minute, this is.
I'm asking a question, now you're telling me it's twenty-seventeen thousand.
My, my, your number is on Brian's.
Did we spend twenty-two million last year?
Yes.
I mean, I printed out the, the report, the, that the school board does to the state, the hundred, you know, the hundred and sixty-one page report, parts of it, not all of it. And you've got to go back to what Brian said, it's the thirty, you've got to use the thirty-three million that was actually spent, not the past, and if you take that number and the number of students in your report, it's twenty-one thousand eight hundred and sixty-nine. This is the published number that you guys put out.
The states changed it the last year though, because some of that money is in different funds and stuff, and they've taken the actual numbers non-divided, so that's how the sixteen-nine came. And I just, I mean, look, I do ask the questions that all you say we don't ask, I do ask the questions, I just had a conversation with our treasurer today, because I wanted an answer to make, to know, have correct information, if anyone wants to ask me, and I asked specifically about that sixteen-nine number. And that is an accurate number, by today's standards, the way it's figured for every school, every school in the state, that's how it's figured, and that's an accurate number. So that's all I can tell you is what, you know, I asked.
Who's the chairman?
It's right here, from the two thousand eighteen-ish rankings.
Yeah, look, I mean, I can point you at more different websites that give a different number. I mean, but if you go back to the state of Ohio, I'll show you a different number that says thirty-three. You know, so, and it says two thousand seventeen expenditures.
Thirty-three million divided by seventeen thousand is twenty-three.
Here's the thing, if we're going to do cost per student, whether it's twenty-seven, seventeen, we're towards the top, we're towards the top. Yeah, whether, if we're going to do apples to apples, no one can agree on what the right apple is, but we all agree that we're towards the top. I think the only one bigger, I think orange is larger than us, and there's one other, there's one other suburb, we're always between two and three. Now, eighty-five percent of all this money goes to salaries and benefits and the costs associated with personnel. That's why I support it, because, you know, for the operating levy, that's what this goes to, this is separate from buildings, and, you know, personnel costs go up two or three percent a year, and, you know, to me, I think that's.
Why do you give that eighty-five percent?
Is that right, Brian? Is it eighty-five or is it seventy-five?
Eighty, it's about, closer to eighty-five.
Okay, about.
We looked on the state report card, it says like ten thousand for buildings, for the students, and like eight thousand for actual.
So somewhere between seventy-five and eighty-five.
Like fifty percent.
It's not, I mean, it's.
Look at the state report card.
But, but this, this operating levy is going towards that, and it's not going towards the buildings, and I think they're two separate things.
Mike, you make a good point, that if we, if we're going to compare, so, so to undecided voters, what we saw, this is why nobody kind of called out us on, in the spring on this, when we said, it was the same talking point, we said, how much money did you spend last year, forty million dollars, how many students did you have? Okay, so that's, that's where it comes from.
We're towards the top, yeah.
Right, right, there's a federal website too, for anyone who sticks around, I'll point, the fed, the federal website, which shows over twenty-seven grand too. So, but you make a good point, that if we're going to compare it to other districts, we're going to take their total spending.
Right, right, any way you look at it, we're towards the top.
This is why we have the town hall. So, so Jim was next.
Let me ask Brian a question first, a statement was made that the three and a half million loss that's been talked about came about, how many years ago?
About next year.
You're saying for the first time, for the very first time, the state is giving you three and a half million dollars less money?
Two and a half million.
Two and a half million?
The million is increased, what we call.
Then why, then why does not even that simple statement get made honestly and truthfully, because it wasn't said that way at the board meeting?
If you look at, it says, it losses an unfunded mandate, so that's.
When it was talked about, and Mr. Hardest made the statement, he said there was a three and a half million dollar loss from the state, that has been said over and over and over again. Now, okay, so this is the first time we're losing two and a half million, and potentially another million goes against these special needs children, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Let me ask you this question. From whatever, everything that I've been told, and I don't know, because my kids have already, all my three kids have graduated from Beechwood, but I've been told that the superintendent that's no longer at Hilltop was not ready to leave.
Principal.
The principal, sorry, the principal was not ready to leave. When you look at the status of way things are, ew, comes out to Mr. Hardest that he, that she's gone out and she's found another position to go in, it's very nice to be able to say, gee, we now have one principal for Hilltop and for Brighton, so therefore, we can easily make that kind of maneuver as we go forward in the study of the consolidation of schools. It's like a preemptive advance, planning to do that, and we make now an assistant principal salary at the same value basically as I understand it, that Mr. Hardest was given when he became a superintendent three years ago.
Oh, wow.
Big, big money. Now, because you lose a principal, I don't understand why you necessarily need another assistant superintendent, seems a little unsighted, and I don't also understand what else goes on, but let me ask you this question. I was president of an architectural firm for twenty years, we had to make the budgets balance at the end of the year. If we saw, as we did in two thousand nine, two thousand ten, and two thousand eleven, that we were not going to have the revenues, and we no longer needed to have a hundred and two people, at the end of that four-year period, we had forty-eight, we had to make adjustments for the budget. Why do we have to be spending as much money as we do on a per student basis, why do we have to be up, whatever the number is correct, and I'm not saying Mike's wrong, whatever that number is, why do we have to be number one, two, and three? Why, why do we, why can't we? Why, why do we, why can't we say, look, you know, maybe we have to look to see how we can reduce the cost per student costs, and what does it take to do that going forward? Because we can't afford to spend whatever that total number is. But I don't think that gets asked. And as Ed Brustin commented, why can't these things be talked about in a meeting? Why can't we have these facts? And if it means bringing someone from the state schools, I now have a contact that I can bring here who can say anything and answer every question you want directly from the school board, and he will come to Cleveland. And I talk to him as a matter of fact on Friday. So, if we wanna have that, I will get that gentleman to come here. But, but, but the questions are, as, as Ken Cross said earlier, five point nine mils, was there any discussion at all? I was at the meeting when they said that, when Mr. Hardest said the shortage was gonna be three and a half million, and the five point nine mils produces four point three million. So, that's already an advance irrespective of the fact that a lot of people knew, but many more people did not know that their real estate taxes were gonna go up in the reappraisal of the two hundred, of the two thousand nineteen. Why didn't that come out? Why can't, why couldn't the statement be made, Mr. Resident, Mr. and Mrs. Resident of Beachwood, we know taxes are gonna go up. We don't know how much they're gonna go up. We know that we're behind two and a half million plus approximately a million towards the special needs kids. So, therefore, we're estimating that we need this much money. That could have been discussed before the vote on the five point nine mils. I, I assumed, and I don't know because I wasn't at the meetings, but there was no discussion at meetings, at least in, with the public, was there a discussion about whether we should stay with the five point nine and we went in with the same thing on, 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 when we went in for issue two? And I believe there was not one bit of discussion. That, is that the right amount? Do we still need to ask for that? And maybe we should start looking. Why, when you set a budget of thirty-five million to build a high school, reconstruction and addition, which included the auditorium? By the way, folks, it did, it wasn't included because they ran out of money. They had to come back later and spend another five and a half million at a later date. Why did we spend over five billion dollars on the fields, on the ball field? Okay, where did that money come from? Those kinds of debates all need to be brought out so that people have and feel that there is honest understanding between school board and the resident. So, so.
Yeah, I'm having, I'm having, I get, we're, we're talking about pinching pennies and soccer balls and saving money. And I get an email, a couple, within the last month, let's say, give or take, from the superintendent or assistant, Ken, something, that each kid, kindergarten through high school, is getting their own personal Chromebook. Not to, new personal Chromebook. Not to mention the computers that are in the classroom. And on top of that, they just, they did a survey. I, I read the whole thing on some news article with Ken Vian saying that he went and polled the middle schoolers and the high schoolers, that they don't even use the Chromebooks, that they prefer their own devices. Now, why are we spending that kind of money in kindergarten? Kindergarten, I, I can't, not break my own phone. Let's go and get my son and not break his eye. And then, he ju, with all this money issues, he bought them each a new Chromebook kindergarten through. It's absurd.
So, so, since we're about to get kicked out, we're gonna have to keep it short. But I have answers to your why questions. Um, we'll have all these answers next time we meet. And next time, Jim will bring his state expert, and it'll be fireworks. Okay, who hasn't spoken yet, who wants to speak?
I have a really good point.
Quick one.
I don't want Mr. Hardest or whomever to keep preying on my son and other children in the school. Oh, Hilltop needs air conditioning, we don't have air conditioning. We're not going to the meetings, but mom, we need the money for Hilltop. Like, why are they politicizing our children? I, I mean, all the time, I pray, every time that Hardest spoke in front of the school group, that they have this, what shit he was.
This was not.
Yeah, it's very, at the orchestra meeting, he spoke, then he was disappointed.
Why does my child have to feel like we're doing without or something, you know?
Yeah, we're both raising higher.
Hi, my daughter, I just graduated from Hilltop. She's at the middle school. And I just feel unsettled because the kids absolutely loved the old principal. She was so dedicated to the kids. She was all about the kids. And then, all of a sudden, we get this announcement that she resigned.
At Saturday night at eleven-thirty on an email.
Right, and I think there's a lot of parents that are concerned about what is the true statement? Did she quit? Was she forced out? Um, you know, what happened? What happened with the marketing director? Was she forced out? Why, why was she forced out? Um, you know, there are other things that parents wanna know. What is true, especially about the principal? We don't feel like all the facts were there.
So, I'll, I'll. I'll make one quick point, and then Lisa, hopefully it's quick for you. So, these report cards, right? The truth is, we've, um, in the last three years, we've kinda slipped. So, these are the, uh, the actual points. So, right here, from fifteen to fifteen sixteen, we went down by about ten points. And we just kinda stayed there.
That's the performance of the top numbers, right?
Yeah.
The last three years, we've gone down.
We've gone down. The, the dirty secret is, yes, the schools are good because the kids are good. Considering the caliber, we better get A. Now, the big problem, the dirty secret, is we only have an A for the high school. It's a solid B, uh, which is still very good.
All our schools are in A.
No, it's different. It depends on, well, you can, you can, if that's the one that catches the answer you want.
Yeah, but anyway, 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 the rankings, the rankings have slipped,